If you stay standing for the Seneca Intermediate Land Acknowledging Statement. Just as a reminder, at each one of our public meetings and athletic contests, we'll be reading either the adopted land acknowledgement statements by the school board or one of the versions that are adopted off of that or adapted off of the lengthier board one, the one we're going to be reading tonight is for Seneca Intermediate School. Seneca Intermediate School acknowledges the homeland of the Ananda Wapka and the Obeo Territory on which Seneca Intermediate School now stands. We acknowledge that Seneca children were removed from their homes and sent to boarding schools on and off territory. Boarding schools attempted to take their language and culture from them. We send love and acknowledgement to the survivors that reside in our community today. We recognize that Seneca families were forcibly removed from their homes and pushed into Salamanca City Central School District when Kinzuah Dam was constructed. We offer care and support for their children and grandchildren. We acknowledge that Salamanca City and Salamanca School District exists through the goodwill of the Seneca Nation and legally through a lease lasting more than 100 years. Salamanca Intermediate School strongly states our commitment to teaching the history, culture, and language of the Ananda Wapka. Seneca Intermediate School greatly values the diverse community members from all indigenous nations, their rights, their strength, their independence, their heritage, and their connection to this land. We stand with all indigenous peoples, but we cannot undo what has been done. It is the goal of Seneca Intermediate School to make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of indigenous students. Thank you.
Hey, ever any changes to the consensus?
Yes, actually, since last week, there are four changes, one of which is a CSU community service units and an MOA regarding adding an 11-month term to support workers have been added to the agenda. We removed the appointment of school monitor Shayla John, she's applying the position. The open house dates of September 29th and October 13th have been added to the forward information. We also added a student that is traveling to the New York State School Music Association. It's an overnight trip, so that was added to the overnight trips. And then I'm requesting that under presentations, we add an update on safety, okay, that's not on the agenda, but I would like to have that added to the agenda, please.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the amended agenda. Just to say, I'm, I'm in charge of running the meeting tonight. I'm Dale Coleman, senior member here on the panel tonight. I see Carrie John is online. Carrie, if you'd like to step in and run it, that's up to you, but I'm more than willing. And also, Truce Reagan has been seen for the evening, and Truce is out her way down.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with you running the meeting, Dale. I actually asked Mark to ask you about it. I just don't know how well it'll work from the Zoom option. So without being in the room, connectivity issues, I think it's just better if somebody in person runs it.
Okay, sounds great. Thanks. Okay. Next on the agenda are recognitions and presentations.
All right, I'm going to ask Mr. Bartoldick, our athletic director, to give us an update on the summer athletic games and how the fall season started. Do you have just a sheet to kind of go over some of the numbers? Sorry, it's not nice PowerPoint presentation form. I want to thank you guys. Just thank you for the opportunity to present on the summer. It is our second year running our athletic camps and along with, you know, kind of reigniting our summer swim program. The summer still skills camp started on July 11th, ran six consecutive weeks, Monday through Thursday, from 12:30 to 2:30, not 2300, yeah. The camps feature 10 sports this year. All the camps are run by our coaches and staff. The goal of that is to provide instruction as well as supervision. To just make sure we're utilizing the different spaces on campus and doing it safely. Because there is a drop off and a pick off up component that we need to make sure we're working with Ray's team and our coaches to make sure all our kids are there and accounted for. You'll see the breakdown participation by sport per day. And we did add a couple, a few new options this year. And in some of the instances, you might see some numbers that are higher and some numbers that are lower, and there's a number of factors for that. Sometimes other sports are in season during the summer. So you already have, you already have students who are participating in that sport and they're not as inclined to come participate in the same camp sport for that day. But overall, our numbers improved from last year. And, you know, that was, that was great to see, as well as just adding a couple new opportunities for our kids. Our summer swim program is headed by Hannah Gifford with a team of 10 Salamanca student lifeguards. That also started on 7/11 and ran two consecutive weeks, or excuse me, two sets of three consecutive weeks. The goal there was to try to engage more students. Last year went six consecutive weeks straight and we had to, we weren't able to get all of the kids to commit to six weeks, but they were taking a space. This time, we went three, three weeks and three weeks, and we actually improved significantly in terms of our numbers. We had 121 sign up. We serviced 91. The lessons kept the guard, a one-guard-to-five-swimmer ratio with two guards on chairs focused on the water. The guards rotated every other class. We also offered a 12:30, 2:30, Monday through Thursday for open swim that averaged roughly 14 to 15 and 10 guards throughout the summer. The fact that we're able to hire and keep 10 guards is an, you know, it's something I know other places were struggling with. We're proud of that and the support that we get from our administration and the board to accomplish that goal, I believe is starting to build because last year was such a struggle to get that summer swim program going. It was like they're offering no lifeguard courses. The first aid CPRs were tough to come by. We got it in the nick of time. Now, all those kids came back. We are consistent with our advisor, our supervisor, Miss Hannah Gifford's on her second year. So all the routines and procedures have been established and we, we, we offer a chance for the, all the participants, participants to fill out a survey that we send through their email to get some feedback on how the program went. And the feedback has been, you know, overwhelmingly positive. So we're proud of that. We thank you guys and board and administration for the support and hope to continue, hope to continue. The only issue we get is that it's a little hot from 12:30 to 2:30. But we, we want to match it in line with our summer programming educationally so kids can go from morning work right to some afternoon athletics and some activity. So I think it fits pretty well. Okay?
Good, thank you.
Any questions?
While you're up there, tonight, we're appointing two individuals as varsity club advisors. We've had something new, could you just touch base on that a little bit?
Varsity club is new, obviously. It is an opportunity for our student athletes to have a voice in some decision making. We hosted a meeting to trouble or to get some ideas from the student athletes. But nobody really knows what the expectations are as of yet. I can, I can put it out over social media and explain it and describe it to the students. But it really needs to be a student-run club where they are providing ideas and opportunities for sportsmanship, camaraderie. Did I say that right? And the varsity clubs aspect, any varsity athletes is able to be a part of it. And then inside the varsity club will be a smaller student athlete advisory committee. That will be the kind of the inner workings of it to help provide leadership. There's a whole bunch of ideas, whole bunch of different avenues. One example would be a homecoming week, a spirit week. So we organize all of our varsity athletes and our teams, and we all attend a different event that week. So all the football players would go, everyone would attend the volleyball. Or everyone would attend the swimming, or everyone would go to cross country. Everyone would go to the soccer games and just provide a little school spirit that encompasses all of our athletic department, not just specific events. The, you know, the other, the other ideas are there, and the kids had some really good ones about bringing in speakers about, you know, the negative effects of using drugs or vaping or an athletic performance, some things that are specific maybe to students, student athletes. And maybe we can focus in on some of those things a little bit. The other, the other reason for it and the other piece of it is that when things come up, we want to have student voice in there. We want, we want to acknowledge their thoughts and their ideas. And it's always beneficial to hear directly from those who are affected the most by our decisions. And I'm glad we got those, we got two candidates and we'll hopefully hit the ground running and try to get something in front of the homecoming.
Thank you, Chris, thank you.
All right, thank you guys for your time.
Well, let's see, next up is Mr. Haley. He's going to give us an update as far as where we are with some issues we're bothering school safety.
Hi, guys, again, thanks for the opportunity to present. Some of you guys have already seen part of this presentation, sorry about that. So just some new things that we have with our technology and some things that we're trying to do here at the school to make it all safer. Gallagher is our, the system that manages our card swipes, the panic alarms, and then the cameras are actually from the A+ company, but they're, what the, so, um, we got a new site map for the panic alarms, doors and cameras, push button stations, panic alarms and PAs. We've tested every single pulse station, panic alarm, and all the PA systems in all the schools and everything's working 100% going into lockdown. We numbered our exterior doors. The high school set this got four fire drills complete. We did one over Prospect today that went real well. We have one scheduled, another fire drill scheduled for tomorrow and then a lockdown scheduled for Thursday at Prospect. Just go, I'll touch base on the new COVID-19 protocol and then some things that the security team has done over the summer. So this is a, this is what I'm talking about. These are the site maps. Green means that everything is locked down and good. Red means that there's a door that's been open too long. You get the next one. If you, from inside the system, the security guard or whoever that is managing this, they click on that door, it'll tell them the last person that exited through the door, the time that it happened, and it will bring up the closest cameras to that door so that we can check and see who left it open or who was in and out. So these are, this is a picture of our pull-out stations. Prior to this, all we had, we had seven panic alarms throughout all three schools. Now, all the schools have this lockdown pulse station right next to wherever there's a fire alarm. Pretty close. So just another picture there. Pretty much wherever there's a fire alarm, pulse station, there's a lockdown station. New ways to go into lockdown. So we've always had the panic alarms, and now we've got the pulse stations. We can access it through our computer system and we're, we just got some new software that's going to allow us, allow any teacher, any person with a school device to put us in the lockdown. The PA alert in the old school, so what before, prior to this, if we wanted to go into lockdown, somebody had to first recognize that there's a threat, then call down to someone in the office that was at a panic alarm button. They had to push the button, and then you'd have to make a, in the work, or you'd have to make an announcement over the louds, PA system. Now, once that lockdown is pushed or panic alarm button is pushed, it automatically comes over the PA system and says lockdown, 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 tells you to get to your rooms and all that good stuff. This summer, we've numbered all the exterior doors. In the event of an emergency, it'll save valuable time. You can let whoever the first responder is know exactly where you're at. So the way it starts is the main entrance is door number one. Those in clockwise order and right here where a lot of you guys entered in through this east hallway, that's the last door number, door number 36. The fire department has actually put a few of these numbers in their GPS system so that they know exactly where certain doors are at. Camera system's about 98% complete. We've got some new technology that's coming in. We've got some people that are coming down. They're going to look and make sure that our coverage is what it needs to be for the new system that we're getting into. So we're about 98% complete. Okay, updated COVID guidance, so the CDC come out with all this first and then New York State and Cat County has adopted that. So they eliminated the test stay. They removed the recommendation, the recommendation to pod or cohort students. They removed the recommendation quarantine except for high-risk setting areas. There's no more onsite testing for anyone. Was for unvaccinated last year. It's not the case this year. And then the CDC still recommends that people that have COVID-19 wear a well-fitting mask for 10 days. So they'd be isolated for five days and then additional five days when they return. What's the same with COVID-19? You know, students and staff, if you have symptoms, stay home. That's the easiest way to say that. Students and staff who test positive should isolate for five days. Day zero is a day you test positive or you're outside of symptoms. And then day one would be your first day of isolation. Five day, once you're out for five days, you still have to wear a mask for an additional five days. We still provide masks. We have thousands of home test kits for anybody that's looking for some. And then this is mainly for the employees in here. If you test positive, notify your principal and myself so that everybody's in the loop for staffing. And this is kind of what we're preaching to our new employees and our, well, new and old employees, not all, but experienced people that have been here. A big, a big pledge for everybody to keep the doors closed and locked while students are, they're in class, while they're teaching instruction. That's the number one thing that we can do to keep the students safe. Teachers and students know where the safe zone is in their room. Familiarize yourself with our emergency plans and take the drill seriously. I know we had a fire drill today and one of the people that were reporting was having a difficult time because other employees who didn't have students in class were talking and speaking. It's difficult for them to report. So everyone, including the teachers and administration and staff, everybody needs to take the drill serious. Shoot, I forgot my other vigilante. We're making a, it's, Bosie's has it right now. It's a flip chart, basically, that it's going to go in every room. The first, on the very first page, it tells how to use the new PA system so that if somebody, if a teacher needed to call a shelter in place, they can do it right from there, right from their telephone. Okay, what's up and coming? Armed security. Active shooter training with emergency services. So we had, this summer, we've been pretty busy. We did, the lifeguards had, the lifeguards over at the pool had, we did a simulated drowning where the Salamanca Fire Department, they had their EMSs there. Dr. Beeler and myself were there. They threw a dummy in the pool and they had the, that was the simulation. They had to act like this was a real drowning. So they had to clear the pool. One person had to go in, get it up, get the dummy out on the deck and start doing CPR. So they did a pretty good job and then they threw in the deep end. And then that was the real deal there. They really had to use teamwork. But the big thing was is that they got the experience of doing that and we're trying to build a a relationship with our emergency services. We've had our fire department down here a couple different times now to help us with training. We had an active shooter presentation by the Cataragis County Training Officer and Cat County Emergency Services, a guy's name is Bobby Coon and Ken Rice. They come down and they, basically, they showed us how, what they would do in what order if there was an active shooter scenario. And we talked about how we could better utilize our, our safety, security team in the event that we had one of those situations. And what we come up with was that the security team would be, whenever there's an active shooter type scenario, you can have a hot zone, cold or warm zone and a cold zone. Hot zone is where the shooters are at. The warm zone hasn't been cleared yet and cold is, everything is all good. So where the security team would, what they would do in this situation is they would do like combat medic stuff, applying tourniquets, get anyone that was seriously injured from that warm zone into a triage area where they could get worked on by emergency services. So we talked about that. And sometime in October, we're going to have those same people back. We're going to have Cat County Emergency Services, the deputies, the SRT team from Cat County, and the fire department. We're going to put on, we're going to get TECC train or TCC training, which is like stop the bleed combat medics. And then we're going to put, we're going to do a simulated active shooter. This will probably be on a weekend that we do that. All right, I think we got that. So Cat County, all Cat County, the other thing that we've done is all the deputies who patrol our zone have their own swipe cards. That was an issue that, or not an issue, but it was something that we discussed, how we could better help them do their job. And, and that's one area that, you know, rather than have just the SROs being able to open doors in a, in a lockdown event, now any of the Cat County deputies that patrol this zone and the SRT team has their own swipe cards for the school. The SRT team is going to be coming here sometime this month, just for this camp, well, all campuses, just to get a lay of the land. And then we already talked about the, okay, I already talked about that, that's the active shooter one. But the SRT team, that's the special response team. We're just going to give them a tour of the building so that they know the facility if something ever happens and they're that far, that much more far ahead. All right, I guess that's it. Any questions?
Just a quick now.
It's the frame around it where the bottom of the frame is, is rotted out. Maintenance has been here, I know it's getting replaced in the next project. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't work, it's.
It didn't work for me.
Yeah. It's touchy. Sensitive.
You got to smile. With that, you want to smile.
Yeah. It'll turn green, but it's just unhatch.
Oh, the other thing I need to talk about is all of our security guards are going to be New York State licensed security guards. The, two weeks ago, two Fridays ago, we had a guy from SWAT, which is security and security weapons and training. He came down and did the eight-hour initial training that the, our existing security guards need to become licensed. So the next step in that process, they have to do a 16-hour on-the-job training. And then, once they do that, they'll get their, their license and will be licensed security guards and just be an annual, eight-hour annual training to keep that security guard that they have. That's about it, I think. Am I missing anything?
Thank you. Thanks, Rick. Okay, that's the presentation part? Yes. Next is our public communication. Do you have to move anybody?
No, I'm going to sign there.
Okay. Anybody from Title Six?
No.
Great. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is our central office message. Is Karen on the Zoom?
She's not.
Now on the Zoom?
She is actually out of the state at Capress.
Okay, next is our board message. That was several points.
Sure. I wrote a brief 16-page document. I've gotten really enjoyed this. Porchance to share what's inside of our head and what we're thinking. Hopefully, it motivates you. And as you get to know me, every time I have an opportunity, sort of come from a Padine Shoney point of view. In a previous work experience, I was part of a team that developed a leadership paradigm program to prepare our tribal members to take executive positions, C-suite positions, and our board positions. And one of the things that we, we looked at first was the word leadership. And we want to know just what does that mean? And in our traditional communities, our leaders are referred to as foyan. And that in, in English pretty much means chiefs. But there's debate about that. And there's different translations. One of them means those out front. Those who lead. And then another one means those with horns. Because the chiefs wear horn, ear and, in their headdresses. And then the one that I really like though that, I believe this one came from one of the Mohawks. But they said that it means those who put the people on the right path. And I just, I love that statement because it's so universal, it fits so many things. And that's how I look at all of as your leaders. Huge impact, you're an influence. But you, as educators, you definitely do everything you can to put our students on the right path. And I think that's so fitting. I commend you for your work and one word of Seneca is uno ne don. And what I said to you is it's actually interpreted or translates to many layers of things. But I appreciate what you do.
This week, I just wanted to welcome everybody back. Yeah, it's amazing how quickly summer flew and now it's nice to see all the things back into it. The joys of in the morning, we get used to summer and not getting stuck behind the bus and all of a sudden you realize where they are and all that good stuff. But just wanted to thank everybody for the new school year and good luck to everybody and everyone, so.
I just want to welcome them back as well. Thing I'm most excited about is that you guys have a legitimate opportunity this year to try to get something on the creative and bridge the gap in education. Also, the, I want to express my appreciation to the military. I know I've got military appreciation in my brain, but I won't have to be there.
Well, it sounds like our school year is starting out well.
Well, it sounds like our school year is starting out well. Thankfully, the teachers and the students, they've gotten together so far so long. Good luck to all of you. Hopefully you'll catch up on anything we lost.
Thank you. I also wanna thank everybody for, for a great start to the school. Good things, you know, from, from everybody I talked to. I also wanna say apologize for having to wear a mask. I'm in day nine of my, of my COVID pro, pro, so. After tomorrow, I'll be, I'll be free and clear. Um, but I just wanted to say thanks. Thanks to everybody for. Um, superintendent message.
Sure, uh, just a couple of things. Um, as we know, last week we welcomed back our students. Um, and it's great that our buildings are now schools again. Our fields are now arenas for athletics. Our employees are now leaders, supporters and teachers. And most importantly, the units of our community are now students again. While the past week has been stressful and exhausting for our students and staff, I encourage everyone to reflect. On the fact that if we didn't care so deeply for the success of our organization and our students, then we wouldn't be stressed and tired. And I wanna thank each of you for caring enough about our students and each other to be as stressed as you were. And as our students return, also to work hard enough to be exhausted at the end of the week. We will adapt to the conditions and cause stress and we will rise to the level of fatigue, but we must make sure that we never stop caring. Speaking of caring and doing a great job, I just wanted to ask Mr. Schieber to give us a brief update on two of your teachers.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to. Um, currently we have Brooke Canelli and Brandy Kenny, um, in Albany. Meeting with the Board of Regents, uh, they presented, uh, both of them the Lewis E. Gavner Teaching Award. Commem- commemorating outstanding contributions and teaching about the Holocaust, Holocaust and other human rights violations. Um, just to speak a little bit about them, they left yesterday. Late after school, um, drove all the way to Albany and they're on their way back now, so they only missed one day of school. So, um, they're definitely dedicated to the school district, definitely dedicated to the students. And honestly, that was their biggest concern leaving there, you know, for only a weekend, how can we lose class? So, just fantastic job and very happy for them.
We will, um, have a more formal presentation, uh, on their reputation, uh, at the next four years. Um, Mr. Vertosik, Mr. Early just mentioned military appreciation this weekend. Do you wanna just give a quick update particularly on what's happening?
All. Levi is all the, a little bit of a blunt person on that. Uh, the idea just came. From a couple of cool events last year. Last year we had youth night. And we had every child matters night and. It was, it, it was something that brought the community together, community and the school, community together, so. Um, this year we stand, we expanded military appreciation night, some other districts throughout the country. You know, it had, it come up with some pretty cool presentations. Um, Levi. Know if I wanna, how much I wanna divulge, but.
Just be there Friday night.
Just a couple niceties. It, it is, there, there's a, a few things that we're gonna do to make sure that we recognize those who serve. Um, you know, just, just. Appreciate, uh, you know, from, from an athletic standpoint, it's not always connected. But there is some connection there and it is the place where a lot of people come together, so. Um, the following home game will be, uh, homecoming.
Teacher appreciation.
Teacher appreciation night and then the last game will be senior night, every child matters. So it's just an opportunity to, uh, make the night a little special, hopefully get a win.
I also just wanted to acknowledge and, um, thank, uh, Dr. Hamel, Ms. Papum, Ms. Cook and Mr. Musial. On. Friday, on Friday, uh, Seneca Intermediate was presented with a wampum that was created by the students. Um, and we'll have that being presented to the board. It was, honestly, the, the work was remarkable and the meaning behind the symbols that are in the wampum. Um, was completely student generated and really reflects well on the school itself, um, as well as the students that comprise the school, so. It was a terrific, uh, assembly and the product is really pretty colorful and something that I think everyone should have a chance to see. So I wanted to just thank those individuals who, uh, participated in that. And then last but not least, um, it is Trustee Breeze's birthday today. So just wanted to say happy birthday.
Well, thank you. Great, thanks, Mark. Uh, one person I neglected to, um, recognize is Gary John. Gary, if, if you have a, a message to, to tell everybody, that would be super. I apologize for scanning over you, but you know, out of, out of sight, out of mind, I guess.
I was just sitting here quietly, patiently waiting, not a big deal. I thought, I thought maybe you guys kicked me off or something, but, um. Oh, happy birthday, Sue.
Oh, we don't talk about that.
Alright, um, no, real quick though, I just, you know, wanted to welcome everybody back. Uh, appreciate everybody coming back and welcoming all the children back to the building and starting to do what we do. Um, much appreciated. Thank you, everyone. Uh, I did wanna mention though, uh, this past weekend, uh, my wife and I actually had a chance to go see something that was pretty cool. Um, we went to the Regulene in Jamestown Saturday and we went and it was called an Evening with Jerry Brooks. Advocating for a positive school culture. Uh, he's an administrator out of Kentucky and he does, uh. Uh, I guess the best thing to call is a comedy act, but he, he, everything he relates to is back to the school setting, back to the school environment. Um, a lot of the jokes were teacher jokes and kinda went over my head, so I had to ask Mindy to explain them to me afterwards. But he had a very positive message and I, it's, it's worthwhile. To listen to some of his stuff and understand his message because he puts it in a different framework. Um, I was actually really impressed. I had no idea what to expect, but I was pretty impressed with what he had to say. You know, he makes you laugh, he makes you think. Um, I even think he made a few people kinda shed a tear with some of the stuff he talked about. You know, he, he talks about caring for the students, caring for your, your fellow staff members, you know, creating a positive culture, a positive environment. Um, it was a really great show. Uh, if you get the chance to go see Jerry Brooks, I recommend it to everybody. It was, it was awesome. I'm glad she, I'm glad Mindy took me. So I just wanted to bring that up, mention that, um. It was pretty cool to see and I'm sure a lot of teachers and, you know, staff out there probably know who the guy is and have watched his YouTube videos. But he does have a YouTube channel, check it out, he's pretty funny, but he's real too, so. Um, but with that, I just wanna say, you know, I hope that's one of the things we're working towards, creating a positive environment, positive culture for all staff and students. So, yeah, we.
Thanks, Gary. Okay, next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Any discussion? On favor?
Hi.
Oppose? Abstain? Hey, under old business, here, I don't see anything with, um, on the new business, uh. Uh, section A with the handshake with some donation for the headsets.
Sure, uh, this is essentially sort of pass through funding, um, the Senate Commission offers a head start program. Uh, if there are certain requirements that are, uh, met such as certified staff number of days. They are eligible to receive funding and as the local education agency, um, that funding essentially comes through us. We don't take any of it and we don't actually contribute any to it, um, but we do have it passed through our books, so that'd be.
Okay, uh, we need a motion to approve the agreement. Two second. Any discussion? On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Uh, section B, standard workday and reporting resolution.
Yes, uh, this is a federal service requirement. It's, uh, when we add a new position, uh, specifically a new title. At the last board meeting, we added a project director, uh, or Title Six. Once we do that, it's, we are then required to identify the work hours, uh, essentially, and this is part of that process, so. That's what we do this several times throughout the year and new positions are created, which is just another procedural recommendation of that.
Okay, great, thank you. You need a motion to approve the standard workday resolution? Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oppose? Abstain? Please, I can see. So. It's Gabriel Pepo.
Yes, Gabrielle works with our Native American curriculum team, um, or what we refer to as NACD. She has been with us, this will be going on her third year. She has made. Very significant contribution, not only to the Atlantic Council Statement, but also the ongoing curriculum development that that team puts through. Um, she was also one of the individuals, uh, behind the wampum creation. Uh, and a whole host of activities that are going on, uh, that are focused in our schools. Uh, she is a absolute tremendous asset to them.
Great, thank you. If we need a motion to approve the consultant agreement? Second by flip. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oppose? Abstain? Thank you. Uh, such a D, Apex Window Film. Uh, been approved and initially the security for, for the windows, yeah. Um. Do you want to go over there real quick?
Uh, yeah, we don't try and worry too much, but it's a, um, film that's applied to many of the windows. Uh, just to impede, uh, ensure that.
And it goes over. Okay, we need motion to approve this bit. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, uh, actually need a contract with Elacable Central School District. Uh, it's like a.
Yes, um. Elacable Bill is unable to provide services to this particular student, uh, which of course we can do here in Salma, so they have contracted with us. Um, for, uh, to enable that to occur.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, we need a motion to approve the contract with Elacable Central. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, section F is a, um, MOU for SUNY Perdonia Step Program.
Yes, uh, STEP is a science and technology entry program. Uh, we have been working, uh, or that program. Typically referred to as STEP has been in Salma schools for many, many years. Um, it allows students, uh, who may not have, um, the traditional predisposition to. Get into science and technology courses. Um, and we encourage those students to get involved and it really allows them to open up, uh, some doors. Uh, not just for additional education, but also for career. Uh, the grant is run through SUNY Perdonia and this is our agreement with, uh, SUNY Perdonia to once again continue that for sure.
Wait, thanks. Okay, we need a motion to approve the MOU. It's a toss-up. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, item G, uh, is a contract addendum, uh, for me so the Westgate, so office space will be.
Yes, so, uh, as many individuals know, uh, district office has moved, or portion of district office has moved to Westgate. We have recognized that is a very convenient location for us to be housed. We currently also have some administrative staff that are still on site here. As well as a blue house, uh, next to the bus garage. Um, we have decided that it makes more sense to lease the rest of the building, uh, Westgate. And centralize our district office staff there, so this, uh, lease addendum allows us to lease the rest of the building, so. The Salma schools will now have the entire Westgate facility, uh, with the exclusion of the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay. Changing motion to approve the contract, then the nomination? Motion, move. Two? Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oppose? Same? Okay, item H, uh, the CSU memorandum of agreement. Wanna go there real quick, Mark?
Certainly, so, uh, about two meetings ago, we approved the, uh, contract that was renegotiated with the CSU. Or, uh, I don't know about civil service, actually, it's a consolidated service unit. Uh, in there, we did our best to ensure that we are consistent across the board with various positions and titles. Um, but also, uh, with, um, salaries. One of the oversights that when we went, went through and began to enact it is we, our goal was to have the, uh, family support workers. Be an eleven month employee, um, that would be the same with home school coordinators. Somewhere in the compilation of the agreement, we made them twelve month employees. The real goal was to have them be eleven month employees so that all individuals serving as family liaisons work the same schedule. Um, this provision or memorandum of agreement allows that to happen, so now all family liaisons, which include. Home school coordinators and family support workers will be on a eleven month schedule.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, we need a motion to approve the CSU MOA. Any discussion? All in favor?
Nice.
Nice.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, that's it for the new business. Uh, we are moving on to personnel consent agenda. Um, what we have is a list of. Some new and some new classifieds.
That's correct. Uh, let's see, we have an individual, Amanda, who is receiving tenure tonight. She has a permanent appointment for Matt Quigley. We have some new additions to our telling a family, Jared Fish, Danielle Sevens, Lauren Johnson. Uh, and then we have a revision to the start date for Mr. Coletta, uh, from August twenty fourth to October third. Uh, and then there's some other, um. Volunteer positions that have been filled by some of our staff. As volunteers, our diversity club advisors, Keith Jones, the Christian Bureau for Lungs, and as I told you before. Previously, and some of our additional corporate and athletic positions are being filled as well.
Okay, great. Do we need a motion to approve the personal action items? Any discussions? All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Oppose?
We have, we have a motion in the second first.
The motion by.
Well, you're gonna be introducing, right? Yeah, we're gonna do this first.
Yep, motion by Brad or motion by what, second move Brad? Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Oppose? Same? Gary, I?
Carrie said I.
Perfect, thanks. Okay, now, now we can introduce.
Alright, Mrs. Beaver. Is there any chance you have something to say?
Well, you like pointed out. I was going to keep on Amanda Urbanski. Uh, she's a kindergarten teacher at Prospect Elementary. Amanda is kind, energetic, she has a genuine love for her students. Uh, she always has a warm smile and takes a positive approach to her day. Amanda is very passionate about laying a strong foundation so her kiddos can have a successful journey throughout their education. Amanda brings creativity, passion and patience to her classroom. Her innovative idea to keep her students engaged and learning. Amanda is an excellent team player and her insight and experiences are valued greatly. Amanda Urbanski embraces all the qualities we look for in a warrior and we are proud to have her at our district. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have any, any other recommendations then?
I don't believe we have.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, the next item are some uh, um, board information and reports. Uh, first is the enrollment. Um, report. Uh, we have a first reading of the board policy concerning Board of Education, uh, nomination and election. Now, so first reading of women of the parents first. Uh, also have some upcoming events. I'm not that willing to go through the whole bit, but they're there in the agenda if you want to read them. Um. Need a motion to agree on the meeting? Motion by Brad?
Second.
Second by Sue. Any just talking? All in favor?
Hi.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion here. Thank you very much for everybody. Great, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.